Thanks for going there with me.
Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, December 17th, 2024 regular meeting of the Stoughton School Committee. This meeting is being recorded by SMAC for future broadcasting. Please rise if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is the public hearing for the FY 2026 budget. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing for the FY 2026 budget?
I'll move.
Oh, that was made by Armando. A second?
Second.
Seconded by Chris. The motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. That motion is carried 5-0. The public hearing opened at 7:15 PM. The public hearing is an opportunity for residents and all interested persons to comment on the budget either as a whole or at any part thereof. The public hearing is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. I see no one for the public hearing, so give it a second in case someone comes running in. Well, can I have a motion to close the public hearing for the FY 2026 budget and return to the public meeting?
Just a matter of procedure?
Yes.
Is it possible for us to have a discussion around why there's no one here at the public hearing?
That's a good question.
It's your hearing, so.
So, yes.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. So, Madam Chair, to you, I'm just thinking that I know that the budget has gone through several iterations just in the past week as we try to balance the town's fiscal realities with our educational needs. I know that I have not had as much time as I would like to sit with the budget to really go through it. I imagine that may be the case with the public as well, so I respectfully request my colleagues on the committee to consider an additional public hearing to allow the public ample time to review the proposed budget so that we can hear their feedback and input.
Thank you. I will add that the Select Board is also presenting their budget tonight at the exact same time. Unfortunately, we both have Tuesdays as our designated meeting days, so that is unfortunate. Any thoughts or discussion? It's too late to post for Thursday. We have a possibility of doing an additional meeting on the 30th, which would be before our budget deadline of the 31st. That is unfortunately during the break, but that would be a possibility to consider that date for another public hearing, certainly. Once the public to be able to have an opportunity to comment on the budget, we certainly saw at the Finance Committee meeting last year that the public had a lot of thoughts on the budget and would like to have the opportunity for that. Of course, public comment will be on the agenda coming up as well, but yes.
And just for my own clarification, what are the avenues, are all the avenues for which the public could provide input or feedback? Is it only during that public hearing comment period?
I believe the public can come and comment during public comment. That is always, the budget is always open for discussion during public comment. Certainly, we are all reachable by email, by snail mail if somebody would like to write a letter. That is also a possibility. Address it to us at the central office. I have gotten letters, so it's certainly a valid way for that. So, public comment, public hearing, as well as email and regular mail. Any other avenues? I believe they could even call in our executive assistant and leave a message.
Absolutely. If they could, I'm sure they could schedule a meeting with the superintendent or reach out to any of you directly.
Correct. Yes. So, still plenty of opportunities, yes. I know we will hear some as the budget process moves through. Any other comments on the public hearing? All right. So, with that said, can I have a motion to close the public hearing for the FY 2026 budget and return to the public meeting tonight?
So, moved.
All right. That motion was made by Lindsay. A second?
Second.
Seconded by Chris. Moved and seconded. All in favor or vocal vote?
Aye.
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 All right. That motion is carried 5-0. The public hearing closed at 7:19. The second item on the agenda is public comment. We have no one signed up for that one as well. Again, other opportunities to reach us if anyone has a public comment. That moves us on to some unfinished business. The first item under unfinished business is the South Elementary School building needs update, specifically our Elementary School Building Committee update and responsibilities. The Elementary School Building Committee met on Wednesday, December 11th, and unanimously voted in favor of submitting the article to the special town meeting tentatively scheduled for Monday, February 3rd. You have the article, you were given in the packet, the article that was approved by the building committee. And then you have at your tables the updated versions of this. One is updated as per the MSBA once they looked at it. And then the other version from the town has the sunset clause information, given that this project will take longer than the regulations of the updated sunset clause. So, two major changes to this is virtually the same article, but I do want to note two changes. One is that the overall cost of the project has been reduced, about $1.25 million. That is related to the project team going back and looking at specifically the change in the delivery method from the construction manager at risk to design, build, which comes with a little bit of a premium and the possibility of exploring, you know, looking at finishes. Are there things that we can change? There's no significant change to the design itself, specifically the educational portions of that design, because that is what the MSBA requires. We can, we move forward with the plan pretty much as it is. The other major change is you'll note that there's a parcel that's been included. That parcel that has been included is the property on which the South School currently stands. By including this parcel in the article, the idea is to allow the Select Board and the other governing bodies the ability to use any remaining funds from this appropriation to demolish the South School building once a new school building has been built. And we've gone through the process where the school committee votes to release this building from the educational use, and then the Select Board and Town Meeting approve that as well. So, that was the two changes that I would like to note here. Any questions about the article?
Great. Change draft.
Yes, I know. It was a good addition. There's a healthy contingency built into this. There are several million dollars that were built in this to account for changes in things like costs of materials. And the hope is that the demolition of the building, which currently is estimated around $1.1, $1.2 million, that there would be enough to do that. So, that solves some of the concerns that a number of townspeople had. Our intent, should this whole process go through and we are able to build this new consolidative data building, is to return the South School property to the town and have that building demolished. We do not intend to keep that building around for our own fun. That is a building that definitely needs to be, to go live its good life. And then that property be returned to the town for their use, whether they sell it, turn it over to Parks, the Parks Department. We'll see. The next Elementary School Building Committee meeting is Wednesday, January 9th. That will likely be about 7:00 PM. And I will note that the School Building Committee is holding a community forum right now that is in late January and will likely be at the middle school. So, that's information to come. Any other questions or comments about that? I will note that the Select Board is closing the warrant right now, so unfortunately, we don't know the results of that, but I assume that everything has gone to plan. At this time, we have a couple of minutes to approve. One is the December 3rd, 2024 minutes. We had that last time, but postponed it for tonight, and I would like to ask for any amendments for the December 3rd, 2024 minutes. This is for the regular meeting minutes.
Yep.
Yes, Karen, I'll start with you.
So, under the student advisory representative update, the third line down, the teachers shared that they feel they are getting this curtain, like to add some kind of wording that says this was through the student representative.
Yes.
Teachers didn't come to the committee and share that first off.
Students had heard, is what I would practice that with.
Yeah, I think I put down teachers shared with the student.
I like that one.
You could put the students heard from teachers.
All right. I like that. Teachers stared with students.
With the student, yeah, with that student.
Or with that student, okay.
Yeah, with that student. I don't know if she had it with any other student, but that's a good student.
That's a good catch.
And then under new, excuse me.
Sure.
All right. Under new business, the multilingual English lawyer said this topic was tabled.
Right. Postponed.
Postponed, okay.
I think we did say tabled, but the technicality.
I learned that one.
We should have been postponed.
Maybe Armando got me on that postponement.
Yes.
All right. And then, under the Maria Julia Scholarship Memorial scholarship, that's second sentence where it said the scholarship will go to students of Portuguese descent who are pursuing. We could either get rid of that altogether, or I would prefer to have the entirety of the description, which was actually the issue. It wasn't just those two items. It was the full applicants must be of Portuguese descent, planning to pursue a degree in education, applicants should have a minimum GPA of 3.0 on a 4.0 scale in the last calendar month, and preference given to descendants of former students of Mississippi. So, either that entirety of this scholarship application or just remove it and say that she was a bilingual teacher, and then I thought it was too specific.
Okay.
Either one is fine with me.
I would just note that I've been giving, I have been the ones giving the brief summaries. That's been kind of the way I've been presenting this, based on kind of a quick reading of this, and so that our recording secretary is recording what I've been saying for that. And then in our upcoming meetings, the 10th, we have similar short descriptions, so I think we either need to decide, do we cut these descriptions out entirely, or do we have the full ones quoted in here?
Yeah, I don't mind just cutting out that sentence, you know, the scholarship will go to, because that didn't really say what I was looking for.
Okay. I understand. In this particular case, we're, the specificity is the issue. Other thoughts from people trying to think of ways to, well, if we cut it entirely, that will get rid of the issue, but.
We just need additional information.
Okay. All right. So, I will have, I will connect with our recording secretary and have her add in the full description, if that makes sense.
The entire description of what it was, that's fine.
All right. So, that's for me to do. Any other?
And that was it for me.
Okay. Chris, you had a couple, or you had a lot.
Well, while we're still there in that same paragraph, can we get under the third line where it says Ms. Karen Towers thinks this is too specific?
Get that.
Because the word "this" is too big.
All right.
So, can we say thinks eligibility?
Okay.
Is that accurate?
That eligibility was too, yeah, that's great.
Okay. That solves a lot of the issues.
Yeah. Okay. So, first, under the student advisory representative one, I'd like the third full sentence, line two, starting students were surveyed. I would prefer that it read, students were surveyed recently, scratch the rest of it, on their reactions to the block schedule. I think it's confusing and not incredibly clear.
Okay.
The way it's done at least, just in terms of how you relate word for word what we said, but.
Yeah, because they weren't just asked about the long blocks, it's the flex block and the change in the days.
Right. Under the superintendent update, the first sentence.
You probably have the same.
For my own clarification, because we, I think we received several reports for that meeting. Are we talking about the ADA report?
Yes, that's what I would like to add as well.
Let's please add that to the ADA report. And was it compliance about the high school auditorium or the full high school?
It was the full high school, the high school, let's say, building.
Yeah.
And parking lot, actually. There was issues in the parking lot.
Exactly. The property. How about high school property?
There we go.
Okay.
Or facility.
Yeah. And then, third sentence, Stoughton Public Schools, the superintendent and the director of facilities were unaware this was happening. Instead of this, I would say that this compliance review was happening, just for clarity. Okay. This is going to be a first, but hopefully not the last, on page three, under C, redistricting of all K-5 elementary schools, update.
Oops, Chris, here. Sorry.
I will make sure I check with the.
Yeah, thank you. Apologies for everyone at home. Bad school committee member, bad. So, I have under C, redistricting of all K-5 elementary schools, update, a big smiley face and star for both Catherine and Nicole, because it seems to be one of the few times where we actually define a term, and I think that is a great precedent, and I feel we need to do that more often, particularly in the minutes.
Okay.
So, I absolutely adored that. Other corrections. Under school policy review subsection 2, EHB, policy data and records retention, I'd like that sentence amended at the end to just say wording was added to clarify this is based on Massachusetts state law.
And then cut the rest?
Yep.
Okay.
Policy GBGE, second sentence, this policy was changed to give people options. I wanted to change that to domestic violence survivors. And then options on who to give leave documentation to. And then, the last sentence, this leave can also be used to care for family members in this situation.
Okay.
And that was it for me. Let me know if you want my notes.
I will text with you. I will probably try to do this tomorrow.
Okay.
Lindsay, corrections?
Nope. He nailed it.
Armando, anything?
Nope.
Okay. All right. So, can I have a motion to approve the December 3rd, 2024 minutes as amended?
Some.
All right. Lindsay?
All right. Second.
All right. Seconded by Chris. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. That's carried 5-0. We have the December 10th minutes. We just got these today. Yeah, we can.
I could motion, I will make a motion that we postpone these to the next school committee meeting.
All right. So, we have a motion to postpone these to the next school committee meeting, a regular school committee meeting. That was made by Lindsay. Second?
Second.
Oh, I'll give that to Armando. I've moved it seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. That's carried 5-0. So, that's moving on. All right. Moving on to the meat of the meeting, which is the FY 26 budget and town meeting articles. I would like to turn it over to the budget working group for an update.
Yeah, I actually wanted, I don't, what I'm about to say may be that this is actually not the meat of the meeting, which is just that Dr. Biata has been out this week on bereavement leave, so we are holding him and his family in our thoughts this week. So, just given that he's not able to be here tonight, I'm thinking I'd like to see what the committee thinks about postponing this conversation until Thursday so that we're able to have Dr. Biata here to get into the weeds of the budget discussion and really get into our questions and comments, if that feels okay for folks.
Lindsay, I really appreciate that, and it would also give me time to really go through the budget more thoroughly so that I can have targeted questions for the superintendent and the director of finance.
I'm on vacation after tonight, so.
Not anymore.
No.
I'll be at it next week.
Tell us what that's like, please.
So, do we, would we want to start some conversation about it and then continue it?
I think.
Or just postpone the whole thing?
I think if we postpone it, then we can have Dr. Biata dig in, and I'm sure we can touch base before then, too.
But no Heidi.
You know, we'll miss you, and we'll hope that you're enjoying your vacation.
You could phone in.
I know. I will note, we also.
We anticipated that we would be.
Yes.
Yeah.
As were we all.
Yes. I will note that we also have articles on the table. We have four. We have been asked to postpone the high school stage area, so I believe that we are all in agreement to leave that one for future town, special town meeting or regular town meeting next year. So, that leaves three on the table. And again, I think we've had presentations on that, but if you have questions or concerns that you would like to bring to that, unless anybody feels absolutely ready to vote for today, we can postpone those to Thursday as well. But I would like to get those articles voted. I know we've had a couple of presentations on those, and I believe that they remain the same, remain unchanged. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do any of my colleagues require additional time to consider those articles?
No, but it might, I might prefer to do it at the same time as the budget so that we have the full picture, if that feels okay.
Yours?
That makes sense to me. I think it's worth looking at, especially because we are, we now have a number for the school building project, slightly lower, but still a very big number. We're going to have a budget, which is also going to be a very, very big number, and then we're going to have these articles as well. And I think it's helpful for us to show that we've looked at the full picture, because this is a lot of ask of the town and to understand and make sure the public understands that we have looked at the full picture and think about that. So, I believe we're pretty well set on terms of information, but if you do have any other questions, as you're thinking about those, all those balls in the air for that. All right. Any other questions, comments on the budget? All right. Well, that brings us to the policy review. And that brings, I will turn this over to our policy review working group.
I believe the, all of the policies before you, we have already explained the changes that have been made. So, I guess it's, this is the opportunity to get any questions from our colleagues regarding the changes made or any concerns.
Karen? So, there was, as I was going through these, a couple of things that I wanted to add on here is at the bottom of some policies from other districts, they have listed when each, we had talked about this, Chris.
Yeah.
When each policy was revised or adopted. So, I would like to have those added onto the policies.
Add that on here, too.
It's ready to go.
We actually touched on this last time. So, and if you've heard this before, when we polled over the entire manual, they didn't include that. So, we had a choice of going back and amending like thousands of policies. But what we've been doing is as we update these policies, when you send them to me to send to MASCE, I'll put the date in. And then, so any policy that you see that's been revised or reviewed since the mass adoption in 2016, they'll all have that date.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for that. And then, I don't know if you wanted to go through one by one, but there was one where the formatting on the top was a little bit different from the other ones, and I just wanted to make sure that they were all kind of uniform.
Is that ECA?
Yes, it was ECA. Yep, yep. So, if we could just, yes, it was. It was file ECA, and it should look like where it says on the top of the other one, Stoughton Public Schools policy. Yeah, so that one could just look the same as.
So, what will happen when we go through the process preparing them and send to MASCE? I will make sure all the formats match the format that we have in our policy manual. Absolutely.
Thank you very much. And then I turn it over to the rest of the board. Thank you.
Were there any concerns, edits, questions from our colleagues?
I had one very, very tiny thing, which was for policy DJA. I know the update was to just clarify that it is the school committee, not just the committee.
Correct.
There are two spots where it says committee, and I just noticed one was edited, but the other wasn't, so wanted to just insert the word "school" in the second paragraph there, which like you may have already had on your radar, but I just didn't see it highlighted, so just wanted to make sure.
Right. Yeah, I think it would make, it would make sense. Thank you for that, Lindsay. I, that first committee completely slipped my eye. So, my recommendation would be to clarify school committee the first time, and I think there and after committee would be fine.
Okay.
But it does require shifting that school to the first committee. Thank you. Great edit. Any others?
I just had a clarifying question. So, the only one that is new is GBGE, domestic violence leave. Is that correct? All the rest are revisions of existing policies?
That is correct.
Okay.
But, sorry. GBEE, there is no change to? Is that right? Was it that one?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Do we need to vote to adopt something that is already adopted? Or is that one an easy one to just check? We've done it?
Oh, no. Well, going back, and you have to forgive me because I don't have my notes. I believe GBEE was an additional policy, wasn't it, providing clarification?
I thought, I thought they had made some changes, and we just didn't change any, we didn't notice anything on here that we thought we needed to clarify or change.
So, this would have been a clean policy from MASCE?
Correct.
I believe it was.
Okay. Yeah, so, yep.
And adulterated by.
Yeah, so, and this would have been with no adjustments by the policy working group, but this was a policy.
Yes.
All right. I didn't.
Is it new?
It was a new policy in the MASCE manual, and I believe it was designed to correspond with an existing policy to provide clarification.
Okay. Because I didn't find it in the online policy manual, so it is new.
Okay, okay.
Okay. New to us.
Okay.
So.
Well, yeah, we have seven on here. One has, four of them have gone through the full process informational discussion, and they are up for vote. We also have these ones, the three that have gone from informational and discussion. You know, we could vote them as well, they, especially since they are sort of small modifications.
Yeah, generally, the rule of thumb is if a policy is not contested by anybody in the committee, or there's not a huge significant change, absolutely, you can vote at the discussion component. So, you could vote all these policies tonight.
Any recommendations from the policy working group to hold off, or you think?
No news.
Okay. Because it would be nice to start with a clean slate in the new year, especially since we're working on budget. Anybody from the committee have thoughts?
I can make a motion.
Okay.
Before you do, just for a point of clarification, Mr. Ford, you told Karen that it would be reformatted. That includes removing all the cross through, removing the yellow highlight and the draft watermark?
Absolutely. All these policies, when you send them to me, will be completely cleaned up, formatted. We'll also do another quick proofread, and then, and then we'll put the date in that was adopted, and then we send it up to MASCE.
Okay.
And then, within a week, it'll appear in the manual.
Okay. And at that point, can I respectfully request that at least Karen and myself receive a copy of the fully adopted clean policy?
Absolutely.
So that we can change our, change out our policy bibles?
And what I'll do is I'll send you, I'll just CC you on the email that goes to MASCE. So, then, when it's, when it's updated, I get my response from them. You'll get that as well.
Perfect.
Yeah, in fact, we could just get the hard copy, because Chris and I hold each a copy for the committee of the full policy.
And what I'll do, in addition to that, is I'll make a, I'll make a copy, I'll punch some holes in it, and when we come back to our next working meeting, I'll have it for you.
Way to go above and beyond.
Appreciate that so much. I know, this is full service.
Right, so, I believe Karen and I are in agreement that we would request the school committee to adopt all seven policies tonight by vote.
Okay, so I will move, I'm going to make two separate motions. So, I'm going to move that we adopt the revisions to policies DJA, DJE, ECA, EHAA, and EHB.
Can you repeat that again? Sorry.
That's okay. It's the first five policies that are listed, so I'm moving that we adopt the revisions to policies DJA, DJE, ECA, EHAA, and EHB.
Thank you.
Why just those?
Because those have revisions, and then we'll adopt the new ones.
GBGE also has revisions.
But is it new to, is it already in the, existing in the policy manual? All right, so we're going to do just the new ones.
Yep. So, GBEE is the only one that I believe is new.
And the, GBGE, although it's a law, the policy's new.
Oh, okay, gotcha, sorry. I think I'm confusing myself.
All these policies.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor to adopt the revisions to the first five, DJA, DGE, ECA, EHAA, and EHB. So, that motion was made by Lindsey. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Armando. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, so that's carried 5-0, so those are adopted, and then, a second motion?
I move that we adopt policies GBEE, personnel use of technology, and GBGE, domestic violence leave policy as presented.
That's how you do it. Okay, we're, I'm on the same page with you now, I understand.
Yes. All right, so that was made, a motion made by Lindsey. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Armando. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, that's 5-0, that's carried. All right, thank you, yes, that's a little bit of a, a little bit of theater. That brings us to our next meeting. So, our next regular meeting is in January 14th, here in the conference room at district offices. However, we would like to, we have a meeting posted for Thursday, December 19th. I currently have it at 6:30 PM. I'm a little bit open to time change, if someone has a real objection to that, but I would like to be done, I really can't go past, much past 8:00. In the conference room, we, the conference room is available, we can have that meeting in public, which would allow people a chance to come and talk, we could also.
In person?
In person, sorry.
It'll be public?
It will be public, they will all be public.
Sorry.
It's been a long day. So, that will be, it could be an in-person meeting, we have the option, we got to make it hybrid if we need to, but we need at least, I think, three or four of us in person to be able to vote on this, if we do have it in person. So, I currently have it scheduled for the conference room. And then, the possibility of, if we need it, Monday, December 30th, that one could be virtual, I know the offices are technically open, but that is kind of a tricky time to round people up, I don't want to have somebody have to run home from Christmas vacation or Hanukkah vacation, or whatever vacation you have, to meet for that. Again, that one's, I think, at 6:30 virtual, but again, open to suggestions for that, but we are tentatively planning on that Thursday meeting, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right. I'll start for that.
Where is the conference room?
This conference room at the Stoughton Public Schools District Office, 31 Pier Street in Stoughton, yes, this one.
Is that my room?
No. This conference room, our, our home. All right, if there's nothing else, motion to adjourn.
There is one other thing?